Oh, sure.
All right, it's all right.
Was that me?
I think so.
We have seals on the line.
I'll get it.
It sounds like seal.
Okay. Oh, that's loud. I can, all right, somebody's gonna sing a song. Yeah, well, it's really loud. Anyway, Janice, are we live? All set. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, one to call to order the Town of Camden Select Board meeting for November twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-two. As an upfront note on our streaming, we are streaming on YouTube this evening as well as Spectrum Cable TV Channel one three oh three. And we are also available, availability of a link for our webinar. The link can be found in the Camden, Town of Camden website under Select Board. Call up our Select Board Agenda or Packet, and on the Agenda you'll see the link. Please feel free to do so and join as an attendee. If you do, we'd appreciate very much if you'd like to participate, to raise your hand. That's the preferred method, and you can ask questions or make comment as you will. Do not use the chat function. The Q and A function you can use, of course, but we may not get to all the questions to, and if they're not, they're not a matter of record, just so you understand. With that, I will call to order the Agenda, and the first item is public comment on non-Agenda items, and since there's no one here from the public, I will assume there's no one going to speak to it, and no raised hands.
So they can't hear us, nor can they see us, apparently.
On YouTube?
On YouTube.
YouTube says it's waiting.
Okay, we'll give it a second.
I just texted. I know it's.
It's fine.
Oh, it says, watch live now, Town of Camden Main Planning Board, eleven seventeen twenty-two. I just got a.
Really?
I just got a YouTube, like, notification.
Oh.
I can start it from.
I think we start it from here.
Go ahead, because I've got a recording right now.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on.
All right, sure, sure.
And thirteen oh three is not working either.
That's weird.
So that's gonna be a lot again and again here.
Okay.
Let's see here. Does anybody remember this?
The code?
I mean, I can find it, I just.
I have it here, I think, please. I had it.
What did you?
Uh, the password.
How would I do it? I know I have it.
Janice, do you have that memorized?
Yeah, it's Camden.
Do we want to say it on the, I mean, I don't think it's.
Main, one, one.
With capitals?
Yeah.
I guess Jeremy's the only one on YouTube.
That's correct.
On Zoom right now, so we should be.
That's correct.
I think it's working now.
Hey, do you?
Oh, really?
She says, mother recognizes your scarf, so she must see me.
Oh.
Okay.
Now you know everything.
Well, then let's not start a second screen.
No, let's not, let's not, let's continue to move forward with, I'll repeat the, um, Paul, if it's not, let me know, we can.
One way or another.
Yeah, yes or no?
What color is the scarf?
What color is the rose in Bob's hair?
No, I'm not. Okay, I'm just gonna.
Okay, go ahead. No. Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-two.
I'm gonna suddenly see us because she recognized the scarf.
Well, she saw you walking out the door.
I don't know.
It's live, it's livestreamed. We're livestreaming, according to my computer.
Let's go ahead.
We are, repeating again the call to order, the first item in the Agenda was public comment on non-Agenda items, and we have no one from the public here, and I see no raised hands on Zoom, so we proceed to Item Two, which is the approval of the Board Minutes from November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Any comments from the Board or a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve the. I make a motion, we approve the minutes from the November fifteen, two thousand twenty-two Board Meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion made, and second, any comments from anyone? Not hearing any others in favor? Five zero, thank you. Item Three is one public hearing for the application of Long Grain at twenty Washington Street for the renewal of a Class One liquor license. Not seeing anyone here from the public or anybody's raised a hand in the public from the Zoom. I will not address the normal process because the public hearing is obviously, purpose is to get the Board to get input from the public on any matter at hand. Since we don't have that, I will close the public hearing, public process under the public hearings and revert to Select Board deliberation directly. Any comments on the application or a motion to approve, Board?
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license for Long Grain.
I second.
Motion made, and second, any comments? Not seeing any others?
I just have one, brief one.
Yes, go ahead.
The background check has been done, right?
Correct.
But we're still, the signed form will be added to the.
Correct.
To the form, okay.
Just in the package. That's correct, the Police Department has approved the background check.
Okay.
Any other comments, Board? All's in favor? Five zero, thank you. Onto our action items, the first item is the approval of the renewal Taxi Cab Business License for Craft Delivery and Taxi at eleven Main Street. Comments or motion to approve?
So moved.
I second.
Motion made, and second, any comments from the Board? All's in favor? Five zero, thank you. Now we have the, um, the review, and of course, approval or modification to the proposed calendar for Select Board meetings for calendar two thousand twenty-three, which is in your Packet. Hope you all had a chance to look at that. As you all know already, that the, you know, in general, the Charter specifies that our meetings will be the first and third Thursdays of each month, and that's pretty much what the schedule is based on, however, there are occasional holidays that will cause that situation to be modified, but are there any comments in the Board on the schedule?
The only comment I have is the July fifth one.
July sixth?
Fifth.
I'm sorry, July fifth, day after the Fourth of July?
Fourth of July is on a Tuesday.
Correct.
Proposal is to have it on the fifth.
Correct.
Will we, does anybody know at this point if we'll have a quorum on that night?
I'm sure I'll be around, you won't, you won't be there. Okay, good to know. Anybody else have a problem with that date?
Like, if you know, I know.
No, I don't.
I don't.
I don't have a problem with it. I don't have a problem with any dates on here.
Don't have a problem with changing it if Stephanie wants to change it?
Yeah.
Maybe I won't even be here. That's the awkward part of this, too, the way we do.
So exactly, so post-June, we don't know who's gonna be on the Board.
Right, exactly.
Correct.
So, I mean, I think we should make a note that you won't be here.
Okay.
But, and maybe address it.
Well, there are times when we're gonna miss a Board meeting, but to Stephanie's point, if we have a danger, we know in advance of a quorum, then we should address it. I agree with that.
We can move it.
To what? I mean, we want to have a little space between meetings, and we're kind of crowded up against August, with the two-week cycle, so it's a little difficult not to have it during the, during the week of the, of the third, I wish it's that week, so you only have Thursday and Friday.
You're off the whole week?
Yeah.
So it's that week?
It's fine, I just wanted to make sure.
No, that's, that's the purpose of this.
Popular week.
Yeah, I understand, and a lot of people do take vacation during the Fourth of July week, and it comes on a weird day.
Yeah.
We could. Can we move to, to eleven and twenty-five, and then eight and twenty-two? Because that still gives us a week. July, just push July and August one week.
You can, you can do it.
Do that.
You can do it.
And this, and this was the last Board in August would be the twenty-second.
You can do that.
And that leaves us a week before the Fourth, so we're back to.
I do think it's generally better not to, like, plan when, if we already know that Stephanie can't be here, I might, I mean, if it's easy to change it so that, starting off knowing that somebody's not gonna be here, and it'll be the first meeting with a new Board potentially.
Yeah, so July, I suppose, July eleven and twenty-five, and then August.
Eight and twenty-second.
Eight and twenty-second.
And then we'll have the week of the twenty-eighth of August, and then we'll have Labor Day, and we'll resume on the fifth. Okay.
All right.
Good job.
All right, so that's the only change I'm hearing, anybody else?
So I was a bit confused with November.
It's the month after October.
Thank you. Is it the one just after October and before December?
Sometimes.
So there's a lot of coloring in November, and I couldn't.
Different sized squares. It's like, complex code.
I agree with you.
It's not an important meeting on the eighth.
Yeah.
Go ahead, you can make fun of me, it's fine.
No, no.
What is on the eighth?
Public record.
There's a lot of.
Meeting, it's just not a long or important one.
So, so. So let's make it long and important. What's the purple? Oh, it's the annual town.
If you look at, if you look at the legend in the lower right, you see there's an annual town meeting and election there.
So we would have the Board meeting on the eighth?
It was green, it was green. Am I colorblind? I see purple. Anyway, the seventh, the seventh, we have had meetings before on Election Day, we have done that, but the proposing, it was proposed here is Wednesday, the eighth, and the twenty-first, which puts us into Thanksgiving Week.
Oh, it's blue, I guess, it just looks green.
Yeah, it's the eighth, it's a tiny, it's a very short meeting.
It's gonna be the unimportant meeting.
Unimportant, but, okay, so let's solve November, but then we have to solve June then, as well.
June?
Yeah, because we need to have a Board right after the election, right?
You do, the twentieth.
Well, usually we do it the day or, or the day after, didn't we?
I don't think it has to be.
It doesn't have to? Within a week.
Okay.
I believe is where the Charter was written.
Are we talking about November or June?
I believe within Charter.
I'm trying to confuse you.
In the days past, we had, were required to have a open town meeting on the, within a week of election, and in that open town meeting was when Board Chairs and Vice Chairs and Attorneys were appointed. So, so you could, it's up to you all, but we could stay with the schedule as it is here.
Okay.
Up to you. Is November okay with, I mean, the only complication here is Thanksgiving Week, because, you know, it's the Tuesday before, I don't, I don't care, unless you all do.
The Tuesday before doesn't bother me too much, but I'm happy to do whatever.
Okay. I suggest we make the changes to July and August and leave it to the status quo, and remember, an advance notice to the public, we can always make changes during the year.
Okay.
So, if there were the comments, I would make a motion, have a request a motion with those two, two months changed, please.
Make a motion to approve the meeting calendar, with the exceptions to the changes. July will be the eleventh and twenty-fifth, the August will be moved to the eighth and the twenty-second.
Perfect. Second? Thank you, Tom. Any further comment, Board? All those in favor? Five zero, thanks a lot. Let me get back to the Agenda. Okay, the third item we have is the previously tabled appointment of Cemetery Committee members. I believe we were here at, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I usually am, there were two openings currently.
Okay.
On the Cemetery Committee, is that correct?
Two terms expiring.
Two terms expire.
Yeah, so technically open.
Okay, okay. Recommendation?
Well, once again, there's lots of interest. Sophie's more recently been at the, we co-liaison that committee along with the Library Board and sort of tag team back and forth. I don't, did anything come up at the meeting that we should be aware of?
They asked about it, actually, because Owen was there and asked the status, whether he was re-upped or not, and I told him, I just gave them an update that we had opened the process again because we wanted to make sure that people who wanted to apply had the chance to do so, so, so they want to know.
So then Janice said that she reached out to the people who had applications on file and was able to get in touch with Nancy. That was the one I was kind of concerned about before, because she had done her nice application, and she said she was still interested. And then Stewart's application, nobody has spoken with him, that's just in there again. I would say that with Stewart, he does participate and has lots of knowledge, he's a Parks and Rec employee.
Right.
And so, since the Cemetery Committee has a contract with the Parks and Rec Department to do mowing, it definitely makes sense, if Beth or, you know, who's ever in charge wants to send a staff representative, or, you know, the Cemetery Committee wants to request a staff representative, then they can decide to send Stewart, and he can participate that way pretty easily. So that makes more sense to me, rather than, you know, since the Cemetery Committee has a contractual relationship with the Parks and Rec Department.
Yep.
It should really be the head of, you know, the department head that kind of defines how that is gonna work, and I think Stewart has been going, so then I would say that Samantha, I know was, she was interested in any committee, I talked to her about whether she wanted to do the Conservation Commission, she was a little bit more busy now than when she had initially applied. Jeff is the current Chair, so Jeff, I think, is an obvious choice to re-up. And then there are a couple more terms coming up in.
June.
June, July, so there's gonna be another opportunity. I would like to see us give Nancy an opportunity. She's been, you know, had, been waiting with her application, last time we put Owen on for that year term. Owen, I'm sure, won't be shy about continuing to go to the meetings and help out, and if he wants to, you know, the meetings are open to the public, so I guess I would propose that for tonight, we put Nancy and Jeff for those two terms, and that we encourage everybody else to continue participating as they wish, and with the awareness that there are two more spots coming up in June.
Any other comments in the Board, otherwise we can move to approve?
I like that. Do you want to make a motion, or?
Oh, I meant for that to be a motion.
Okay.
Long-winded, I would move that we appoint Nancy, what is her last name again?
Noyes.
Nancy Noyes and Jeff Sutford to, to, three, is it three-year terms on the Cemetery Committee?
Three, yeah.
Second.
Three.
Motion made, second.
I don't like this choosing.
I understand. Any further discussion, Board? All's in favor? Three zero. You mentioned earlier about co-liaison, are we clear on this committee, who the appointees are? Is there anybody else interested in being part of this?
I wouldn't mind being part of the Cemetery Committee.
I feel like I've got a lot of other, like, stuff, and.
Happy to relinquish it to you if you want.
Yeah.
It's interesting, it's a very.
I mean, I'm still interested, but.
No, no, I'm just laughing about how quickly everyone's like, oh, you're interested.
I know, so now I'm like, maybe I don't. No, it's great, I mean, it's, yeah, I feel bad that I sometimes can't make it, and there's between the, yeah, we should spread around the committees a little.
We had.
Because we were short.
One other that isn't super active.
Yeah, that's, I mention it because we have two new members, the Boards, and we don't want to just assume everything is as it was, in cases of interest, and Stephanie expresses so in hearing, and we don't need to move on just designating Stephanie and Sophie as our co-liaisons to the.
I'm happy to tag team if you want to.
I have no problem with that at all.
If you can, or.
I'm happy to, I have no idea.
Yeah, it's a very light schedule.
Yes. Anyway, onto the last item on our action list is the approval of the traffic calming policy, as you recall, we had this as a discussion item a couple of weeks ago, and made some comments on it, I think, believe Audra has made some slight modifications to it for the Board's approval, maybe you could just summarize that, any changes of significance, Audra?
Yeah, so there was discussion around if a neighborhood is to petition the Board to consider their street for a traffic calming project, what would be the, you know, the threshold for the, you know, amount of people that we'd, we'd need to see interest from? And so there was a lot of discussion and a desire to sort of leave that open, to say something like the majority of residents on the street. So that change was made, there was a reference to an appendix that was taken out, and aside from that, it's pretty much the same.
I just want to add, I think a week after we had this meeting, there was a very interesting article in the New York Times about how all over the United States, the State Department of Transportation have been prioritizing traffic throughput and vehicles, and they're starting to change their point of view and their perspective by really looking more into pedestrian and bicycles, and there's a, so, so I'll send it to you, and maybe we can attach it, because I think it's a good reference, and there's also a recent study that showed that unfortunately, the United States is the leading country in the Western world in terms of traffic deaths, and we can't seem to get it down. So I think it's really timely to talk about traffic calming policy, and to start thinking about enhancing pedestrian safety and bike safety, and share the public good, and increase protection for people, so, so thank you, Audra.
Absolutely, thank you all.
Are there any comments on, on the draft that's in our Packet, Board? If there are none, Tom, did you have?
Do we actually have an evaluation process where, I mean, I understand it varies from instance to instance, but identifying what we're going to do actually for, I understand the value of keeping it fairly open as well, but what we're going to do to identify how we are going to study the traffic pattern, for instance, pneumatic strips, or.
So we, we don't have the strips, but we'll have two of the radar boards that take both speed and traffic volume, so we'll, we'll set those out as we always do, but also, because it's coming from the Planning Department, we're also gonna do like a conflict density analysis, so we'll look at, you know, what are the generators of traffic in the neighborhood? So, you know, one, I think, good example, that'll probably be the first one to come up, if anything comes up, is C Street. And so when you're looking at a street like C Street, you can't ignore the fact that our largest private sector employer, which is Lyman Morris, is at the end of that street, and it's a major traffic generator for that neighborhood, so, you know, you'd look at things like that, as well as how is the street configured, how closer dwellings to the street, you know, does it have sidewalks, does it have park, on-street parking, you know, what's the geometry of the street, is it a connector for like a, you know, a school or some other major feature of the community that people walk to, things like that. So, you know, we're not just gonna be looking at traffic counts and speed, but also, how is that street used, how is it set up, and all those factors, and trying to figure out what the best solution is there.
So we own those Boards?
Yeah, we had one, and we're gonna purchase a second one.
Okay, and those will be deployed by Police Department, or?
They're the ones who set them out, yeah, yeah. Allison.
Sort of along similar lines, at some point, I would love to get kind of like a basic primer on how they decide where to put those, and the threshold that's used for determining what counts as speeding, or what doesn't, or just a little bit more about sort of like the science behind it and best practices, and how.
Do you mean as it relates to, like, enforcement programs?
I guess largely it's been, I mean, in the past, what's happened is people complain about speeding in a certain area, then they put those out, and then there's some kind of a report that is generated that.
We don't see it.
Really never gets discussed, like, I've seen them occasionally, but I've always been left with a lot of questions.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, people ask me, well, they put it here, and that's, you know, doesn't, isn't a good place to put it because of X, Y, or Z, or just, I assume there's some kind of training that happens, and they, there's a science to, well, to where they, you know, put all of this, and how they evaluate speed, and how they make sure that it's not just gauging the speed, that people are going right at an intersection, or how they.
Yeah, and I would say that the way that we'll be using them for like a traffic calming study will be different than how the Police Department uses them for, you know, trying to determine enforcement priorities, because, you know, one of the things that I would like to get away from is the whole eighty-fifth percentile methodology, where, you know, speed limits are set by what the eighty-fifth percentile is determined to be, you know, but there, if you look at like, traffic planners are moving more towards looking at, you know, what's, what's sort of the average, and then who, like, what's the highest end of it, so, you know, what are the worst offenders, and why is that happening?
Right.
And trying to get away from, you know, what we've been doing, which is setting it at the eighty-fifth percentile, so you have a street that was thirty miles per hour, and you're finding, okay, well, the eighty-fifth percentile's thirty-five miles per hour, so people start kind of speeding up and speeding up, and the speed limit all of a sudden starts creeping up. This, you know.
It's the assumption that the eighty-fifth percentile, that most people, or eighty-five percent of drivers, will choose a safe speed on their own.
Right, and like, the posted limit has nothing to do with the behavior itself, which, which is, it's, they found that to be untrue, so I think that for the purpose of, you know, this traffic calming project, we'll be using that data a little bit differently than how, you know, a police department would use it for enforcement, or how DOT would use it for setting speed limits.
More for traffic control rather than speed control.
Right.
Just a subtle difference in terminology.
Trying to really figure out what's going on on that particular street that's driving.
It's complicated equation, it's, that's, obviously, MDOT has nine criteria they use when they evaluate a study of a, if they evaluate our mountain street, they'll apply those nine criteria, only one of which is speed.
But in any case, I think it's a good point that we have access to the data.
Yes.
And that whenever we do a traffic calming study, that we. And that whenever we do a traffic calming study, that we have a debrief in the board or some session so that people know.
Sure.
And I think a few months ago...
You might want to have the microphone a little closer, too.
I can't hear myself. I think a few months ago, Tom made a point about having baseline data and before we do an initiative or an intervention, I think it would be really good also if we get into the habit of doing that because, or else we don't know what we're measuring.
Right.
So part of the whole package.
Yes.
With that, any other comments on the policy itself?
That, I think just on the broader point, I wanted to also bring up seasonal, both for analysis and calming measures, and we should take into account. And I don't know if maybe it's addressed in here somewhere, I didn't see it, if there's any seasonal variations.
It says that it would be a year-long study.
Yeah, if it isn't, Tom, it's not accurate, frankly, because we know we have street problems only in the summer here and not in the winter.
Yeah.
Well, the traffic volume is higher, much higher in certain streets in our town in the summer than it is in the winter.
Sure.
So if you do a study in the winter, it's not indicative of there being a problem or not.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, so with that, do I have a motion to approve the policy?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Motion made, second. Any further comments, discussion? All's in favor, 5-0. Thank you, Audra, thank you for correcting that or changing, modifying it. To our fifth item, which is Audra management reports.
Yes, so I was supposed to have a meeting today with, or supposed to set up a meeting for tomorrow, rather, with Northeast Mobile Health Services. I'm sure some of you have heard that the Penn Bay Hospital, who was utilizing Northeast for interfacility transfers, has contracted with North Star Ambulance to do a lot of those interfacility transfers because they were having difficulty, Northeast just couldn't staff ambulances to be available for those interfacility transfers while also providing 911 services to the four communities that have contracts with them. And Northeast prioritized the contracts with the communities over, you know, being able to do those interfacility transfers whenever the hospital needed them. So that led the hospital to that relationship that they have with North Star Ambulance. And there were some rumors going around about what that would mean for Northeast in this region. And so I received a call today from Rick Petrie, who's their chief operating officer, and he just wanted to assure the four, or the two town managers and the two town administrators that they're committed to staying in this area and honoring the contract and there's no imminent, I think, closure of Northeast. They just wanted to put everybody's minds at ease and sort of dispel any rumors that had been going around about that.
Right, right.
So I wanted to communicate that to everyone, just in case you had heard anything or had any questions about that. I think that they still would like to meet with us because, you know, for, for those of you who were around when we did this study, which was in the middle of the pandemic, so even if you were here, you probably forgot about it and a lot of other people probably don't even know that it happened, but there was a study that was done jointly between the four communities and Penn Bay Hospital in regards to ambulance services and, you know, the relationship the towns have to the hospital and how, because we all relied on Northeast, our fates were really tied together in that regard.
Sure.
And what the communities could do as well as the hospital could do to make sure that we are all getting the sort of service that we needed to transport patients that needed to go to the hospital or be sent to other facilities after they got out of the emergency room. So that sort of was the study that led to all of the work that the fire department is doing to transition over to doing, you know, first responder service as well. And so I think that, you know, in, in regards to how that's all shaken out with the hospital, Northeast would still like to make sure that they're giving us regular updates and, you know, everybody's aware of what everyone else is doing and what that's going to mean for everybody's long-term planning when it comes to emergency medical services. So that's the EMS update. We've been getting a few emails from some of the building owners around the Montgomery Dam impoundment about how the gate's being managed. And so I just wanted to let everyone know that Dave St. Laurent, our dam control agent, has been writing back to the property owners, just letting them know why, you know, the gate is open and what's being done. A lot of it has to do with weather and, you know, wanting to make sure that the gate is open in preparation for the lake drawdown because that's still something that we have to keep an eye on to make sure that the lake levels are where they need to be in preparation for the winter. So whenever we do a lake drawdown, we have to open up the Montgomery Dam impound, the gate so that, you know, we're not accidentally flooding any of the buildings there. And also the bottom board on the gate that was broken this summer broke again, so that needs to be repaired. So it's, it's going to further be drawn down so we can fix that board again and armory it a little bit better than it has been so that we don't have to worry as much about that or do things to lessen the probability of that happening in the future. I had a meeting right before Thanksgiving with the new owner of the Knox Mill. We had a really good discussion about the parking lot lease purchase agreement. So that, you know, I'm going to propose at some point that in preparation for the June town meeting, we consider purchasing that lot outright instead of doing, you know, the remainder of the 15-year lease purchase agreement. I just think that, you know, as time goes by, some of these agreements get forgotten about. So I think that if we can purchase that land outright, subdivide it, and everybody moves forward, it will just be much cleaner, easier. We can plan for what we want to do with it and feel pretty good about any sort of capital investment that we make in that lot. And also, you know, he's, he's very interested in better utilizing that building. I'm not sure if some of you know, there's a fourth floor that's attic storage space right now that it would, it could easily be converted into more apartments. And, you know, the business model for that facility is long-term rental units. So it's one of the, you know, I mean, I'd say as, as rental units go in Camden, they're fairly middle-of-the-road affordable. So I think, you know, the more of that type of housing that's available, the better it is for Camden. So I'm, I'm pretty excited to work with him on, on that plan. There's also some other space within that entire complex that's unfinished space and underutilized space that he's very interested in converting into residential, long-term rental units. And there might be some work that we need to do with him on, you know, ordinance amendments to try and make that work. And it has to do a lot with the ground floor residential, commercial issue. So it was, yeah, very, very positive, glad to have him as a member of the community, very experienced in property development and managing rental units, which is perfect in terms of what's needed here right now. Oh, and I also went to the Midcoast Council of Governments' annual meeting where they did the strategic planning and really good discussion on how as a region, and we're talking all the way from Belfast to Brunswick, we can be more collaborative and competitive in securing some of the large federal funding that's, you know, potential that's, that's available. So that's things like, you know, us, Rockland, Bath, Brunswick, I forget who else. We've all got projects where we would like to redo our public landings or whatever the other communities call them, but it's all basically the same thing. Dammer Scott is another community. So how can, instead of us individually competing for that money and competing against each other for it, can we start looking at like much bigger grant projects where it's all of us putting in together, which would, I think, make us much more competitive as a region because we're able to talk about, you know, our, how our different facilities have, you know, different purposes and functions and are important as a system and not just as individual amenities for individual communities.
What a great idea.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's, that's my updates.
That's good, a lot of good stuff. Select board reports, Tom, do you have anything you wanted to mention?
I did go to a planning board meeting. I think it was right before Thanksgiving and they primarily addressed Five Mountain Street, which is the old High Mountain Hall. Looks like the Bay Chamber Commerce, Bay Chamber Concerts has a, some exciting stuff going on in there and concerts upstairs and lots of good stuff. So nice addition to the town when they get it done, I think.
I think, I agree.
Pull it from Rockport.
It's very exciting, actually.
It's not going to tape.
Yeah.
I don't know the timeline on the project, but I think they're hoping to have some music in there next summer.
Oh, I think you're right.
Did they secure the funding?
I think you're right.
Yeah, that project's a go.
It's fully funded.
Oh, yeah. As far as I know, I mean, yeah, they're, they're in the process. The only reason it went before the planning board is there's a cubic foot addition, a second floor on the north side of the building.
Oh, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Didn't think about that. But the construction is quite far along, actually.
It is. Yep.
Good. Allison, your question?
That intersection, thinking about, I was recently looking through the downtown master plan, again, because of the Elm Street stuff, and that isn't, that Mountain Street, High Street, whatever intersection is another one that's been identified as pretty bad for pedestrians.
Oh, yeah.
And I know it can't be really part of their site plan review for this project, but just for sort of reminds me as more people are, you know, going there, we should be revisiting that, like, you know, some of these master planning documents that a lot of it still, even though it was done in like 2012, a lot of it is still really relevant and reminding ourselves of that.
That's a good point. It was not part of the site plan review. Parking did come in, but middle schoolers do take classes there after school at Bay Chamber. So we'll have more, more foot traffic both year-round, particularly in the summer during concerts, but kids, too.
Is that Mountain Street issue again?
Yep, yep, something to keep in the back of our minds as we talk about...
Good point.
Walking community.
Allison, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Yeah, there's a Conservation Commission meeting tomorrow. A lot of energy on the Conservation Commission to, as often happens with committees, just, you know, everything technically is, if you expand, it could fall underneath the Conservation Commission. So been sort of encouraging them, one of the, what the select board initially designated was wanting them to focus on stormwater and street trees. And there has been a lot of focus on that. There's also a lot of interest in a number of other things, you know, ranging from invasives to working with Rockport to, you know, all kinds of things. And so we're kind of trying to sort through a little bit how to make sure that, you know, committees are in their, you know, specific committee time, there's, you know, the select board kind of knows what everybody's working on and we're prepared to support or collaborate with that. And that if they want to do more things, that there's no reason that, you know, people that know each other through the committee, you know, they can work on things, but it doesn't all necessarily have to be through the Conservation Commission because it's starting to, like, scope of things to take on is expanding. But one of the things that we have been focusing on, that we talked about before, is identifying some areas of town that would be appropriate for like a resource protection overlay. We have shoreline zoning in like our major, you know, McGonagall River, McGonagall Lake, Cosmopan, like the big ones, but little streams like Daly Brook, a lot of these smaller streams that we're actually having stormwater problems with already, don't have any kind of special protection. And if they were to be developed a lot more around there, there would be, you know, significant problems. So looking at the beginnings of like recommendations for additional resource protection overlay and, oh, the other thing is trash cans. I'm getting a lot of questions about how we go about, it seems like in the winter, all of a sudden, all the recycling tends to go away or a certain amount of the recycling and then a lot of trash cans, too. We already are kind of short on trash cans. It feels like we've talked about this before and there was supposed to be this new era of, as we try to encourage Camden to be a year-round destination, people keep asking me, why aren't there any trash cans?
There are definitely fewer in winter.
Can we just, is that, I don't know what the appropriate venue to bring that up in is, but...
That's fine. That's just, just checking. That'd be fine. Always, always good to have answers to questions.
Well, that, too.
Yeah.
You have to decide. I mean, I think they have these pretty trash cans that are made of wood that they get, that they bring in because they get damaged.
They do.
But if we could...
They're actually holders for the cans. They're wood holders. You're right, they do get damaged, but it's sidewalk plow.
I can say that this is sort of the time of year where you don't have, they can't do projects, there's no plowing. So things like bringing the trash cans in to repair them and paint them is, this is what they do right now.
They're getting brought in to be...
Well, I'm just, I'm just telling you that's part of what they do right now. I'm not saying that's the whole reason.
Right, let's, yeah, let's, let's just take a look at it and just get to it. Anything else from your part?
Miss Sophie?
Library?
What?
Oh, the library, yeah, I did attend a library board meeting and they've hired a new program director who's also named Julia to replace the Julia who we lost to Rockport. And on, there was, it was, it was a pretty light meeting. They are going to be returning to a meeting in person or a hybrid meeting forum. There was considerable discussion about that and, but not until January.
Oh, I see. They probably shut it.
And, I was going to tell Stephanie, there is not, there is a little bit of unhappiness about Santa not reading at the library and something about the Christmas by the Sea Committee making a decision about Hasmer, about Santa reading at the Snow Bowl instead. Not really a town issue, but there was also some discussion about that. And I didn't weigh in, I was just listening, but...
Santa drama.
If you have any questions, they can talk to the committee.
I was like, oh, the Santa thing.
The headline tomorrow.
Yeah, Santa Claus coming to town.
Santa Claus drama at the town board meeting.
Sophie, do you have anything you want to add?
I attended the Cemetery Association Committee and I appreciate that the members always answer my questions because cemetery management is definitely out of my depths. No pun intended. But it's super, no, it's super interesting because there's a lot of things actually happening in the Cemetery Association and management. So I learn a lot and they're patient with me and I'm grateful for that. That's it.
Stephanie?
I attended a Zoom about the MMA training.
Yep, yep.
So that was actually kind of interesting. It was a little long-winded. I was like, do I get like a lot of credits for this?
You do, you get a star.
I'm just saying, it was very long, but they filled the time really well. So it was good.
Oh, yeah.
And then just a reminder that Christmas by the Sea is this weekend, official start of the parade. So that's pretty interesting if anybody in...
On Friday.
On Friday. Did I say Saturday?
No, no, you said Friday.
Did you say a time?
6 o'clock is when it starts. And Holly is still taking applications to be in the parade. I think the last count, we were up to 22.
That's what I heard.
So that's pretty awesome.
That's great.
I know one of them intimately.
That's great.
But good, that's good, good. It'll be fun night at 6 o'clock.
Was Diana in it?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Yeah, it's going to be interesting. Some of her costumes are coming out. Anyway, we divert to me. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. I was going to mention Christmas by the Sea also. It's an exciting weekend for all ages, I think, and the parade is actually fun. It actually is, you know, for, we're a small town, we know that, but it's actually a lot of fun. I really enjoy it every year.
The new electric school bus, I heard, is going to be featured in the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I heard about the door issue.
With the electric school bus?
Yes. The door doesn't open up when the school bus goes up the hill. I'm sure they're fixing it, but it was, that's why the Cemetery Association is so interesting. You learn a lot of things.
They have their comments about that.
A small comment I would make is, in addition to enjoying Christmas by the Sea, looks like a... looks like C Street Route One project is just about done today. Finally, no elimination of the one-way traffic control, which means more to me than you all, but. Yeah, that's right. That's right. You're on the other side of the fence, literally.
And it affects you.
I haven't, I haven't looked over the berm yet. I haven't looked over the berm yet.
It's very upsetting, but whatever.
Yeah, but the good news that part is done.
Win some, you lose some.
Yeah, other than that, that's, that's all I wanted to mention myself. With that, I would like to entertain a motion from the board to leave the Select Board meeting and, and to enter a, an executive session under MRSA 405 parent six, parent E, Legal Rights and Duties.
So moved. Second?
Motion made and seconded it. All's, second, all's in favor. Thank you. We will take a few minutes to close down and Audra, we probably should check on.